Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, commissioners, the Village of Forest Park, regular council meeting for September twenty second, two thousand and twenty five will come to order. We begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. If you're able, please rise. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Maxham, Commissioner Nero, Commissioner Mellon Regovin, Commissioner Vogt, Mayor Huskins.
Here. Okay, approval of minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the September sixth regular council meeting?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. It's been moved by Commissioner Maxham. Is there a second?
Nero, second.
Seconded by Commissioner Nero. Discussion?
Mayor, there was an error on one of the roll calls. I corrected it.
Okay. Is there a motion to adopt the minutes as corrected?
Yes, I'll make that motion.
Thank you. It's been moved by Commissioner Maxham. Is there a second?
Nero will second.
It's been seconded by Commissioner Nero. Discussion? Okay, there's no discussion. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Maxham, Commissioner Nero, Commissioner Vogt, Mayor Huskins.
Aye. Okay, the clerk has indicated that there is no public comment tonight. There are no formal communications before the council under department reports. You all received a police report and a fire department report. Any comments on the reports? If not, Madam Clerk, we're ready for bills by resolution whenever you are ready.
Be it resolved by the Council of the Village of Forest Park, Cook County, Illinois, that we dispense with the reading of the individual bills in as much as each department had his approved and signed bills in the following aggregate amount for their respective departments. Refunds and allocations, one hundred eighty-three dollars, thirty-four cents. Public affairs, thirty-three thousand, two hundred twenty-one dollars, forty-five cents. Police department, seven thousand, two hundred forty-seven dollars, fifteen cents. Community center, six hundred forty-seven dollars, ninety-seven cents. Accounts and finance clerks office, twenty-seven thousand, six hundred eighty-nine dollars, seventy-six cents. Accounts and finance fire department, six thousand, two hundred three dollars, six, sixty cents. Department of Health and Safety, fourteen thousand, five hundred sixty-eight dollars, twenty-six cents. Streets and public improvements, forty-eight, I'm sorry, four thousand, eight hundred sixty-seven dollars, sixty-three cents. Public property, two hundred six thousand, eight hundred twenty-one dollars, eighty-six cents. Seizure, one thousand, six hundred sixty-five dollars, forty-five cents. Federal customs, four thousand, six hundred fifty-seven dollars, thirty-three cents. Tiff, two thousand, seven hundred twenty-four dollars. VIP, three thousand, two hundred eighty-four dollars, forty cents. Water department, twenty, two hundred ten thousand, five hundred seventy dollars, forty-nine cents, for a total of five hundred twenty-four thousand, three hundred fifty-two dollars, sixty-nine cents.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Commissioners, is there a motion to adopt the resolution on the bills?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, it's been moved by Commissioner Maxham. Is there a second? It's been seconded by Commissioner Nero. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Maxham, Commissioner Nero, Commissioner Vogt, Mayor Huskins.
Aye.
This is Resolution R dash ninety-two dash twenty-five.
All right, Commissioners, there's no unfinished business before us tonight. So moving down to new business, the first item is a presentation by the Forest Park Chamber of Commerce.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Let me get organized here. Okay, last February, I appeared at the council meeting to report on marketing activities for September one, two thousand and twenty-four through February, two thousand and twenty-five, and to summarize the planned marketing activities for the remainder of the period, February one to August thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-five. The report that you received shows the actual report for that period, and all the receipts have been submitted to Administrator Entler. Tonight, I'm here to answer any questions or gather input regarding the marketing activities for that period and the preliminary plan for the current period of September one, two thousand and twenty-five to February first, two thousand and twenty-six. I created a different report this time to be able to show, I think it's a little more comprehensive than the printed packets because of the ability to include links, like the new dining video, social media reels, stats, demographics, display ads, et cetera. It does save some money on printing as well, but I would welcome any feedback on the format that I've provided. Most every partnership that we have allows us to increase our reach and to reach audiences we could not reach on our own, especially with digital and social media promotion. In addition, many of the print options that we do also have a digital component. Social media consistently ranks as high priority due to its ability to provide extensive opportunities to increase visibility, drive brand awareness and traffic, and reach targeted office audiences, even as specific as their hobbies and their geographical location. Many businesses rely on it as their primary marketing tool, and it remains one of the components of the marketing plan because we've seen some amazing results, and our audience continues to grow. Blogs promoted on social media, videos, influencer reels, et cetera, continue to produce great results, and we learn something new every day. Speaking of videos, we're excited about our partnership with artist Ian Fath, who did Little Perspectives in the public art. He also wins the creepiest casket every year, and he is sharing his videographer talents at a very low cost. He'll be shooting interviews with a bunch of local businesses, both retail and entertainment, because we just did a dining video, so now we're going to focus on retail and entertainment, which will collectively create a shopping video and an entertainment video, plus individual promotional videos for the businesses to use, which should help the efforts to drive more business. We're also excited about finding the contact and agreement for the no-cost use of the I-290 billboard by the village. We're working on creating some next stop Forest Park content for the billboard to promote Forest Park. We continue to reach new residents of Oak Park River Forest and Forest Park, about three thousand a year, and we're working on a more cost-effective way by creating a postcard instead of printing a booklet that will have a QR code and take them to a digital version of the book. Currently planning Small Business Saturday events and other holiday promotions to drive traffic, and we're working on our website to ensure that all the traffic we drive there for the blogs and other promotions can be easily found and quickly viewed by the consumer. Summer events were a little tough, weather and resources. We would need a committee and a solid plan if we wanted to say one event per month during the summer. Otherwise, it's Christine and I setting up tents and managing the day of. The other challenge is knowing if this is something that would help the business community, and is it something the business community would embrace and participate in? As far as ESPN, we've been tossing that around for a while. We had four businesses interested in partnering with us for a nine-week promo with ESPN. The total cost was twenty-three thousand, five hundred, and that would produce two hundred and sixty-one total commercials. With six thousand allocated to that, the cost to each partner was around thirty-five hundred. At the time, we got four partners. One said they wanted us to find a fifth so that it would be more cost-effective for them, which didn't happen. So in revisiting, at least one of the partners is unsure now whether it's a good spend or not. We could make it a priority to revisit it and consider perhaps investing more marketing funds to make it affordable, if that's something we think we should do, and we would love feedback on that as well. As always, we will continue to work diligently to make the most of the marketing funds entrusted to us and always be available to answer any questions.
Any questions for the Director? Commissioner Vogt?
Thank you for putting this together. It's great to see, you know, sort of a more in-depth, deeper dive into the different applications that you're using and your approach. I am curious, and I don't know if, maybe I just didn't see it because there's a lot of information here, but is, have you sort of gathered any feedback from businesses, or do you have, are you starting to see any data on like the return on investment in like actual visits and dollars spent, or?
For something like Small Business Saturday, for instance, that we did last year, we gave away gift certificates when people came and showed their receipts. And so, for instance, I think we saw, you know, twenty-five hundred dollars of Team Blonde gift certificates, things like that. On something, let's see, like the dining ad in West Suburban Living or a social media post, for instance, it's hard to know what, you know, what happened as a result of that. You can see our engagement, but to know whether they went into a store, into a restaurant, you know, is a little tough. The Mad Pass that we did, you could find out how many were returned in. It wasn't super successful. It was very inexpensive. We just thought it would be a good thing to add to the Dog Days event, which had to be canceled because of the rain. So we did distribute them in any way we could. From the welcome book, we know we reached three thousand new residents in the four, in the three towns. But again, that doesn't equate to actual knowing, you know, whether they walked into a place or not. I do know that when we had the coupons in the last mailing, Crystal Carwash said they got like ten coupons back. So not everything, you know, is, has the ability to, you know, figure out the ROI to a specific business.
Yeah, I mean, that would be great to work with the businesses to maybe figure out a way to start to see the ROI or get their feedback on sort of a regular basis after events or something to see. Or even if they're willing to sort of let us compare, you know, year.
Month to month, year to year.
Like, as it relates to like specific events or something like that, or?
The bookstore was really good at that. He would say, last holiday walk, you know, I did this. I know, I know this isn't part of the marketing, but the wine walk, for instance. You know, people go directly into these places. Some of them aren't going to shop that day, but it's a big selling day for Team Blonde and for other stops like that. So, you know, maybe we need to think about what ways, you know, whether it's events or whatever, like what ways do we get people directly into a business, and then how can we measure that?
Yeah.
So we can definitely discuss that further, for sure.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioners, next item is a resolution providing for the levy of additional library tax for building and maintenance. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
All right, it's been moved by Commissioner Maxham. Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been seconded by Commissioner Vogt. Discussion?
I just want to make sure that it's clear that this isn't an extra, you know, point zero-two percent being added onto the property taxes as a whole. It's just a formal step we have to take to make sure that that gets allocated to the particular fund the library wants it allocated to.
All right. Any other questions or comments, Commissioners?
I guess I can answer that question. I mean, this is just a pass-through resolution we've done every year. Library passes their levy, but we were the ones responsible to get it to Cook County to be levied. So, yeah, it's just a pass-through.
Any else? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Maxham.
Aye.
Commissioner Nero. Commissioner Vogt.
Aye.
Mayor Huskins.
Aye.
This is Resolution R dash ninety-three dash twenty-five.
All right, Commissioners, next item is a resolution authorize the acceptance of a two thousand and twenty-five ComEd Power and Safe Communities grant in the amount of one thousand, seven hundred and thirty-nine dollars. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. It's been moved by Commissioner Maxham. Is there a second? It's been seconded by Commissioner Nero. Discussion? All right, there's no discussion. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Maxham.
Aye.
Commissioner Nero. Commissioner Vogt.
Aye.
Mayor Huskins.
Aye.
This is Resolution R dash ninety-four dash twenty-five.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Commissioners, next item is a resolution approving and ratifying the execution of an organized retail crime grant program, grant agreement, by and between the state and the village. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, it's been moved by Commissioner Maxham. Is there a second? It's been seconded by Commissioner Nero. Discussion? All right, there's no discussion. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Maxham. Commissioner Nero. Commissioner Vogt.
Aye.
Mayor Huskins.
Aye.
This is Resolution R dash ninety-five dash twenty-five.
Commissioners, next item is a resolution authorizing and accepting a grant agreement by and between IDOT and the village for the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six tobacco enforcement grant program. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, it's been moved by Commissioner Maxham. Is there a second? It's been seconded by Commissioner Nero. Discussion? Okay, there's no discussion. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Maxham. Commissioner Nero. Commissioner Vogt.
Aye.
Mayor Huskins.
Aye.
This is Resolution R dash ninety-six dash twenty-five.
Commissioner, next item is a resolution authorizing the village to participate in the new national multi-state opioid settlements and authorizing the execution of related settlement agreements. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. It's been moved by Commissioner Maxham. Is there a second? It's been seconded by Commissioner Nero. Discussion? All right, there's no discussion. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Maxham. Commissioner Nero. Commissioner Vogt.
Aye.
Mayor Huskins.
Aye.
This is Resolution R dash ninety-seven dash twenty-five.
All right, Commissioners, next item is a resolution approving the specifications and authorizing the advertising of bids for the village's two thousand and twenty-five sidewalk improvement program. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, it's been moved by Commissioner Vogt. Is there a second? It's been seconded by Commissioner Maxham. Discussion? Okay, there's no discussion. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Maxham. Commissioner Nero. Commissioner Vogt.
Aye.
Mayor Huskins.
Aye.
This is Resolution R dash ninety-eight dash twenty-five.
All right, Commissioners, next item is a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a consulting agreement by and between the village and Ryan LLC regarding potential development projects within the village. Is there a motion? Thank you. It's been moved by Commissioner Maxham. Is there a second? It's been seconded by Commissioner Nero. Discussion? All right, there's no discussion. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Maxham. Commissioner Nero. Commissioner Vogt.
Aye.
Mayor Huskins.
Aye.
This is Resolution R dash ninety-nine dash twenty-five.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Commissioners, next item is a resolution approving a local public agency joint funding agreement with IDOT for federal-funded construction and local public action, excuse me, local public agency engineering agreement services with Burke regarding certain improvements to the Jackson Boulevard resurfacing between Displanes and Harlem. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. It's been moved by Commissioner Vogt. Is there a second? It's been taken by Commissioner Maxham. Discussion? All right, there's no discussion. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Maxham. Commissioner Nero. Commissioner Vogt.
Aye.
Mayor Huskins.
Aye.
This is Resolution R dash one hundred dash twenty-five.
All right, Commissioners, the final item under new business is a motion for approval of the two thousand and twenty-six village council meeting schedule. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, it's been moved by Commissioner Maxham. Is there a second? It's been seconded by Commissioner Nero. Discussion? All right, there's no discussion. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Maxham. Commissioner Nero. Commissioner Vogt.
Aye.
Mayor Huskins.
Aye. All right, Commissioners, that concludes our new business for this evening. We're at Administrator's Report.
So, Vanessa. Tonight is Vanessa's last meeting clerking for the Village of Forest Park. So I have something that I want to read, but before I get there, I do want to just point out that the village has two deputy clerks who will be filling in in her absence while we figure out future steps. So bear with us the next couple, couple weeks, months, we'll be fine, but we have some big shoes to fill. So on behalf of the village, I do want to read into the record a proclamation honoring Vanessa. This is a proclamation honoring village clerk Vanessa Belmonte on her retirement. Whereas Vanessa Belmonte has served the Village of Forest Park with distinction and dedication for more than twenty years as village clerk. And whereas throughout her tenure, Vanessa has demonstrated unparalleled commitment, professionalism, and integrity in her role, providing vital support to the administration and residents of Forest Park. And whereas her responsibilities extended far beyond the traditional duties of a village clerk, encompassing a broad and vital range of functions, including managing official records, supporting the operations of the village council, maintaining transparency in government processes, and serving as the keeper of vital village documents. And whereas in addition to her duties as clerk, Vanessa served as the village's human resources specialist, overseeing essential functions such as employee onboarding, benefits coordination, and personnel matters with thoughtfulness, efficiency, and deep care. And whereas she also played a crucial role in the management of employee insurance and payroll systems, ensuring accuracy, timeliness, and compliance, all while fostering a culture of trust and dependability. And whereas the scope and impact of Vanessa Belmonte's contributions to the Village of Forest Park are immeasurable, and her institutional knowledge, compassion, and dedication will be deeply missed by her colleagues, village officials, and the community at large. And whereas Vanessa's retirement marks the end of a remarkable era of service, and her legacy will continue to benefit the village for years to come. Now, therefore, Mayor Rory Huskins and the Village Council of Forest Park, Illinois, do hereby proclaim our sincere gratitude and appreciation to you, Vanessa Belmonte, for her more than two decades of exemplary service, and we wish her health, happiness, and fulfillment in all her future endeavors. In witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the Village of Forest Park to be affixed on this twenty-second day of September, two thousand and twenty-five. Vanessa, you not only have helped me as village administrator, but you helped me when I was a village commissioner as well, teaching me the ins, the outs. I am forever grateful to everything that you have walked me through, held my hand through, you know, made me see a different perspective on twenty years in the Village of Forest Park. That's no feat. You've seen many village councils, three, four, or five village administrators, having to juggle quite a few personalities, I'm sure, along the way. So again, we have some big shoes to fill, but I wish you the best in your retirement. I hope that you do all the things that you love in your newfound time that you'll have. I appreciate that you are still allowing us to call you if we have a question. We promise not to bother you too much, and on behalf of the village, we wish you nothing but the best, but we still have you for another six days, so we'll wish you the best again. But congratulations on your many years here in the Village of Forest Park. I just want to point out, she's done a hundred resolutions just this year. So it was very fitting that we ended on a hundred there, so congratulations.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you. I'm not doing a speech now. No, thank you.
All right, we're at Commissioner's Report. Commissioner Maxham?
Yeah, Vanessa, I am happy for you retiring. I am sad for us. It is a loss. I'm a natural skeptic, but when you say something, I never ever feel the need to fact-check it because I know that if you say something, you're going to speak and it's going to be correct. And you're honest, and you always say things as they are, and I have a lot of respect for that. So congratulations, and you will be missed.
Thank you.
And then my second item is that I'm wearing this really cool shirt, and it was, you can also get one of these really cool shirts by stopping by the firehouse. These are something that Local Twenty-seven Fifty-three put out for Hispanic Heritage Month. So it's benefiting a group that raises money to get equipment and supplies to, I think, a department in Mexico, if I'm correct. So they're twenty-five dollars, but twenty-six if you pay with credit cards, so bring cash unless you want to spend an extra dollar. But they're super cute and comfortable, so that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Commissioner Nero?
Excuse me. Yes, just a point, just something to bring up. I noticed, man, for the last six, eight months, maybe a year, Displanes Avenue, I'm sure you guys see it, south of Roosevelt Road on the northbound lane is awful. I know that that's the Illinois Department of Transportation's responsibility. I don't know if there's anything we could do to lean on it, but the potholes in some of those areas, they throw out some cold patch on them, but it is bad. But if we've got to get emergency vehicles down or coming north from the south down to Displanes, that could be pretty hazardous. I think the drop in elevation in some of those is like eight inches, and the claims to the Village of Forest Park could add up, just something to maybe recognize. I don't know. We kind of leaned on IDOT before, and it might be time to see if they did some surfacing in the past over there, just kind of stopped. It looks like it should continue. Next thing here is, I want to recognize Village Administrator Entler. I really appreciated your report. I, I found it comprehensive, you know, it focused on major projects and assignments, but you called it the economic development update. I loved it. It was, it was very thoughtful. For a quick read helps, you know, us stay on top of what's going on in the village, what we're working on and those assignments. So fantastic job. Love the initiative. So yes, absolutely. Keep it up. I think it's great. Another quick point, I know we've heard this time and time again. I really want to see if we could keep these zoning updates that got voted down on the top of mind here at the council. If there's something we could do to bring that to resolution, I think it's absolutely necessary. And why do I think that, well, in the Village of Forest Park, real estate inventory, specifically like single-family homes, is pretty low. It's pretty low. And if you're all familiar with the new house, I shouldn't say new house, new rehab that was done on Adams and Circle, it was the old Legion, had like a market time of three days. I mean, if that doesn't tell you that people want to move to Forest Park, I don't know what does, right? You know, we just heard all of this. Well, I'll leave it at that. I just think that is a big flag waving in our face that says we need to do something to bring that zoning back to the top of the brain to get some movement on it. And then lastly, yes, Vanessa, wonderful run there, twenty-plus years. Congratulations on your retirement. You know, Rachel had mentioned it, and it just kind of really hit me. Through all of the changes that you've seen over the years with department heads, council members, mayors, legal, all of it, it takes an individual to, you know, be the, to establish continuity through all of that, right? To be the rock, and certainly you have been that rock in the Village of Forest Park for over twenty years. So thank you so much for that.
Thank you so much.
End of report, sir.
Commissioner Vogt?
Thank you. Let's see, I will say, real quickly, just about the, you know, zoning updates. That is your department, Commissioner Nero, and I know we have all shared our feedback and concerns and suggestions on how to move forward. So we look forward to your proposals on how you want to do that. I also want to talk about our community cleanup, which we had to postpone due to rain, but it has been rescheduled for this Saturday, the twenty-seventh at nine AM. So I do hope to
So I do hope to see all of you there and our fingers are crossed for better weather so that we can actually hold our fifth annual fall cleanup. Encourage everyone to register. We will still be partnering with you three. And so we're very excited about their donation of a coffee bar for all of our volunteers. And I wanted to thank our very generous donor who has provided 50 t-shirts for our volunteers. So please register and they are available while supplies last. I hope to see everyone this weekend. And I also just wanted to mention, I attended the Illinois Municipal League's Annual Conference last weekend and it was a wonderful three days of information and networking. I sat in on several different panel discussions that covered a wide range of topics from PFAS to cyber defense, municipal budgeting, infrastructure management, and a panel that highlighted different municipalities that had successfully put big ideas into action. So it was a lot of really great information. I met up with Commissioner Melon Rigovin there. I also saw Village Administrator Entler and Megan Roach. I hope you guys enjoyed it as much as I did. Also saw, got to see a lot of our neighbors and just catch up with a lot of other folks. So I really value the conference and do my best to attend it every year and I appreciate the opportunity to do so. And then I will just end by thanking Vanessa for all of your years of service. I very much appreciate you and all of your work here and you will be missed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Vogt. Commissioners, last week, the village sponsored the Suicide Prevention Summit that was convened by River Edge Hospital in partnership with the Oak Park Community Health Board and the Oak Park Township. They gathered over 100 social workers to hear presentations on suicide prevention topics, prevention strategies. Some pretty unique presentations, some geared towards faith groups as well as others that were just more, you know, presenting information. It was held in Oak Brook and it was, it was good for us to be a sponsor, I think, because it drew attention to the fact that Forest Park is engaged with River Edge and engaged with the mental health providers in the area. Thrive Counseling Centers played a big part. And at least one member of the village's mental health board was there and she expressed that they want to be more engaged with the village, whether it's meeting with the village administrator or other staff. They have some recommendations. Thrive Counseling Centers wants to be involved with the village's mental health board. The Oak Park Community Health Board, Community Mental Health Board wants to be involved with our mental health board. And the big topic was removing the stigma associated with discussing suicide and, you know, means of prevention. So I just want to bring that to your attention. This is probably going to be an annual thing. There have been many school events around the area, whether it's District 209 or District 91. So we're happy to participate in all the back-to-school activities and programs designed to encourage the kids and families to be a part of the community. And so that's good to see. And lastly, I'll just say that we're still working with the governor's office as well as the legislature to keep our concerns about transit consolidation top of mind. Chief Anka says that some concerns about the lack of movement in any legislation to address some of our challenges at the Blue Line Terminal. I reached out to the governor's office today. I expect that we'll convene a Zoom fairly soon with someone high up in the governor's office to communicate our concerns about what we'd like to see in final legislation. We for certain want to see the CTA or any transit authority obligated to maintain advanced life-saving capabilities at the station as a means to relieve a burden on our fire department. So that's something that we've been working on for months and months and we continue to work on it. I'll close with saying congratulations to the clerk. And having said that, the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn. It's moved by Commissioner Nero. Is there a second? Okay, seconded by Commissioner Maxam. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Maxam? Commissioner Nero? Commissioner Vogt? Mayor Hoskins?
Aye, we're adjourned.